All right, well, thank you Mayor, and Councilmembers, and Planning Board members, and Steve the Analyst, and members of the public, and City Attorney, and Senior Planner, for joining us. The City Council asked to have a special workshop, they've been having workshops every month about various issues, projects, they talked about residential building setbacks, I believe it was the July workshop, and asked all questions, and wanted to get some further input, and any changes to our zoning ordinance obviously required, zoning tax amendments, which will come to the Planning Board, and then to the Council. So, we wanted to have a joint workshop with the Planning Board to talk about building setbacks. Before we do all of that, since, this is the first time we've had a joint workshop between the Labor, and Council, and sometimes, and we have new members, I think a vote board, why don't we go around, starting with Walter, and introduce yourselves, and let everybody know which board you're on?
I'm Walter Dixon, I'm a chair of the Planning Board, and the EBJ.
I'm Art Schaller, the City Council.
I'm Art Schaller, City Council.
Ryan Schrepp, City Council.
Roland Martin, Mayor.
Jim Heffron, City Council, formerly of the Planning Board.
My partner, the City Council. Thank you, and the City Council, members of the Planning Board, the City Council adopted vision statement, mission statement, four values, and goals this year, and I want to start, I'm getting exhausted, reviewing those, it's on the board, I don't want to read all that too, but, we want to remember these four values, how we're gonna work with each other, take each other's thoughts into consideration when making decisions, how we're gonna be respectful to each other, being prepared, I think in honesty, position, possibility, before, we have had a lull in wait the last couple months, but we're getting into a busier season, Shelley, that's what I'm calling it, getting into a busy season of the development. So, we're getting into a busier season development life, so, I think the vision statement I do want to read, I think it's permanent to the suffering today, and permanently as we move forward with the projects coming in the pipeline. So, the City Council adopted vision is Belmont will be a vibrant, multi-generational community that incorporates small-town charm and heritage with an entrepreneurial spirit. So, just keep that in mind, as I mentioned, this is the setback discussion, it's a follow-up from July, discussion at the workshop, and we have various residential building lines, we have detached houses, we have detached houses, we have multifamily houses, we have ownership houses, we have a variety of housing choices that we offer, and that are on the ground, so that we can see what that looks like when it's built. And, as staff, we learn from every project, and sometimes we have to adjust our practices, not necessarily adjust our ordinances, when we don't quite, when what's in the rulebook doesn't quite work as expected in practice. So, as we've kind of gone through this several-year period of a lot of construction, primarily residential construction, we've got some really good projects, we've got some projects that we've learned from, and I think maybe we won't not repeat. So, this is, this is, this discussion is to help us kind of make sure that as this next round of development, this continued second wave of development comes to us, that the plan that you all have adopted for Belmont is still your plan, still your vision, and that your ordinances aren't blank, and they're what you want for our community, so that as projects come from the planning department or the staff, we work through, they're complying with the plan, they're complying with the rules, those are the planning rules that you want, you are our elected citizens, you represent our community, there are plenty more members who represent our community. So, with that being said, I think that one of the reasons why we have a panel here to discuss some, what's going on in the residential building market in our region, our community, and I think Councilman Turner asked a really good question at the July workshop, which is, we're getting a certain, primarily a certain type of building and development project, and we keep hearing that's what the market wants, and so his question was really, setback, and his question, and I'm paraphrasing to correct me if I'm mistaken, what he said, is, is the market wanting this, or that's what people want? They want primarily smaller, lots, walkable communities, or is that what people want, or that's what's being built, and our ordinance left it in maybe a more profitable than larger lots, where it could spread out a little bit more? So, is, is, is what we're building, what we're getting, is if you call it that's what people want, or if you call it that's what's available, and people want to live in Belmont, so they'll take what's available? And so, I thought that was a really good way to kind of start this conversation, so, even talking, and Shelley was able to work on putting together a panel on, especially sort of the things being available to help us. So, with that being said, I'd like to turn over to Shelley to begin our discussion.
Great, you'll just give us a minute or two to get our, the City Council, so, we can discuss, we'd like to have a panel. Oh, thank you.
Take my second.
Yes, so, we have the microphone in the middle today, so if you guys, if you're comfortable taking off your mask when you speak, so it can be picked up through the live stream, that would be great.
And these microphones in the middle do not amplify for the room, they are able to pick up through the live stream.
Yeah, great, so, panelists all settled, and.
Do you want to go over to the format?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that first, so, first of all, I want to invite Elizabeth Lockamy up here, she is one of the planners here for the city, if you don't know her, she's also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. So, the format this evening, thank you, the format this evening is, we open starts with the introduction of our distinguished panelists, and we do have a set of questions that we're going to ask the panelists, and we're going to ask that the Planning Board councilmembers, you would hold your questions to the end of the discussion, because we may, the next question may hit the thought that came into your mind, that the question panelists might. So then, at the end of the discussion of all the questions, then we will open up the floor to questions and answers with the panelists, and then we hope to have discussion between the Planning Board and Council, to your direction, and to staff. So, I'd like to start by introducing our wonderful panelists, so we have Michelle Nance, she is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and she is the Director of Central Iowa Regional Planning Department. She directs Central Iowa's work related to land use and transportation with a focus on regional and local mobility, helping community initiatives, as well as place-making, residency, and community engagement. Now, her work is dedicated to helping local governments address shared long-term issues through collaboration and partnership. Michelle is a, is the former Director of the Planning and Development Services Department for the City of Gastonia, and has over 25 years of experience in state, regional, and local government planning and economic development. In 2017, Michelle was honored as one of the 50 Most Influential Women in Charlotte Region, and was named 27th Woman of the Year by the Metropolitan Time, so welcome, Michelle. Next, we have Mr. Alan Banks. Mr. Banks is the President and Managing Member of Evans Caulfield Homes, now they are actually building in the Plain Overlake community here in town. He brings professional experience, and has been a leader in the industry, having served as 2018 North Carolina Home Builders Association President, State Representative to National Association of Home Builders, and is the incoming Chair of Rebit, the Real Estate and Building Industry Coalition. We found this really interesting in his bio, when asked why he liked home building, Mr. Banks said, "Our industry builds safe places for dads to read books to his little girl, to celebrate, excuse me, to celebrate the pork hearts, blow out birthday candles with grandma, bend your skinned knees, and help kids grow up. No other industry has this responsibility, and he is glad to be part of it." Welcome.
Thank you.
And then we have our own Allison Cunningham, she's our local resident, broker-in-charge at Belmont Realty, served as a member of our own Planning and Zoning Board. In addition to running Belmont Realty with her husband John, Allison is active in the community, she's a member of the Chamber, several North Carolina Realtor Associations, and is current President of the Belmont Realtor Club.
Past President.
A past president, that's a, that's a position, all right, well, thank you for that clarification, and welcome, we appreciate you stepping forward to help us with this. So, to get started, Adrian went in reminding the board and council that we did our first strategic plan for the city this year with the assistance of Central Iowa Council of Governments, and in that activity, we developed a vision statement, mission statement, and then identified top goals, City Council goals for the city. So, Adrian ran into the record for vision statement, but I want to add a little bit more, the city's mission statement, and this is really pretty important here, so, I think it's important to the discussion this evening. The City of Belmont provides visionary leadership and high-quality city services to create a community of choice for residents, visitors, employees. And with that, through the strategic planning effort, we, working with the council, identified three top City Council goals, they are the area of transportation and mobility, infrastructure, growth management, and balanced growth. So you can see how this important discussion this evening aligns itself to looking at the top issues of the community. So, I'm going to start by turning it over to Ms. Lockamy to provide the first question.
Good evening, let's dive right in and get a regional perspective. This is the first question, it's a multi-part question, so feel free to answer how you are comfortable. The real power is our region's population and demographics expected to change in the next 10 years, and probably those shifts will impact housing needs.
Can I give a test of the technology first, right? Well, first of all, thank you to the City of Belmont, and really pleased to be here, just beautiful afternoon. Is that better? Is the green light on?
Yeah.
It's flashing. Is that better? Is it a battery? Okay, now it's green.
Yes, okay, that's good.
Got it, yes. All right, I'll keep my hands off of it now. So, I could stand out a lot of statistics about how we're expecting the growth, I'm gonna, I will give you a few of those, but I'd like to hold that up with why it's important for housing, so just know that that's, that's coming. When I talk about the region, I like to talk about not just the Central Iowa region, but actually what I call the economic region for the Charlotte area, so, definitely counties around Charlotte, but also dipping down in the South Carolina a little bit, because you know well here, that the region doesn't follow political boundaries, and people are all, all over the place. So, right now, our region has about 2.6 million people, we're expected to grow by about 900,000 by 2035, that's a pretty significant chunk. And, the interesting thing is, if you think about the state's population, over the next couple of decades, two-thirds of that growth is going in two places, the Raleigh region and the Charlotte region. And that's really being pushed by where the jobs are being concentrated, so, in addition to growing, we're actually concentrating in more urban areas, and this is included in that urban area, even though you may think of yourself as small-town, may think of yourself as suburban, you're in a very fast-growing urban region. And, another interesting point is the growth of the standard population. Over half of the state's new residents through 2035 is going to be 65-year-old. That particular demographic is growing about two and a half times the rate of the rest of the population. That has significant impacts on the type of housing that's needed, and what the desire is on. But the other thing that's special, we've got the unprofessional. Just actually a few months ago, there was a follow-up article in The Observer about the net migration of the millennial generation, so, we talked about, you know, between 29, excuse me, 25 to 39 years old, and, you know, people hear a lot about millennials, and it's like, blah, 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 millennials, but it is an important driver of where we are, where we need to be. The Charlotte region is in the top 10 for millennial net migration, so that's basically people moving in, people moving out, what's the, what's the difference? They're coming here for the jobs, they're coming here for the cost of living, but they're staying with the property, to raise their families. And then lastly, the population mix is changing, so we're getting more diverse, the growth in the Hispanic white population, or excuse me, non-Hispanic white population is going to make up about 40% of all the population growth. That's significant in a couple reasons, related to typically the poverty rates, and also to homeownership, so those things. Okay, here, we'll try one to show them something. So, why is, yeah, that's a lot of numbers, but why is that really important? First of all, with the growth, we're going to need more housing overall, okay, so that's, that's basically, but if you think about both seniors and the non-professionals, they want walkable communities, they said it over and over every survey we do, and if you think about seniors.
And if you think about seniors, even though at some point they're giving up their driver's license, they still need to get around. Okay, so transportation's important, being able to bike, walk, build a trail, maybe take transit is really important. Also, the need for affordable housing. And that is a term that is run around a lot, and it means something different in every community. So I'm not here to define that for you, that's for you to think about yourself. But we know that when you're a senior, you're on a limited income, and you're first starting out in the professional world, you probably have less than you do one day. And the other piece there is the desire for less maintenance. You know, whether that means a smaller footprint, whether that means having, being in a town home, having, you know, being able to sell your, all your own equipment, that sort of thing. For seniors especially, you want a community where they can age in place. And many seniors, although, you know, we're staying active longer and longer, but people are healthy, you know, 70 is the new 50, right? But there, you do tend to have some disabilities as you get older. So when you think about housing and the construct of that housing, what the lot looks like, and even what it looks like inside, there's no ramifications for how we grow and build. So I guess with that, the one other thing that was related to, you know, the population growth and how that impacts the housing type, is that, I don't want to get too graniose here, but when we think about transit and how are they stands in the Gaston Alley, we do need to think about different housing types that will allow that transit to be successful in the long run.
As a follow-up, Mr. Banks, I'm curious, are the home building industry starting to react in a plan to maybe changing the mean? Tell us a little bit about that.
Excellent question, and thank you for hosting this event. It's very forward, thinking of this board and this organization to say, hey, let's have a conversation with the industry about what's happening out there. Getting back to your question, though, is the industry beginning to think about that? I think the answer is yes, but that started long ago. And what I mean by that is that the house, the new home today is very different than the new home you would have bought 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, or even 10 years ago. In fact, you can picture maybe the house you grew up in versus the one you would buy today. Housing follows much like, and I almost hesitate to say it, but then housing follows oftentimes like cars. Cars are always innovative, be it in terms of use, be it in terms of function, be it in terms of energy. And the biggest push we're going to see right now, with the overall experience, is where are you going to work out of your house? The years we accepted the second bedroom or the extra bedroom, well, now, that's another shift that's taking place. We, as the housing industry, need to be saying, where are you going to work out of the house? And not just you, where are those spouses going to work out of the house? So that's just one small indication of yes. The innovation's ongoing, and usually it's driven by a forward look at the marketplace itself.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you what, Sally, after the next question. Right. So I read our mission statement out loud to set the foundation of where the city is striving. And it uses the term provide visionary leadership. And I'd like to say that I believe that the city has shown great visionary leadership, and still does today, but it really dates back, as far as a planner's perspective, back to the early 1990s, when Belmont adopted its first form-based code in North Carolina. So that was really cutting edge. And for those in the audience that do not know what form-based codes are, they, form-based codes focus, they're development regulations, design regulations that focuses on neighborhood and building design and character. These codes allow flexibility to achieve a meaningful interaction between land uses and the adjacent streetscape, which is the streets, sidewalks, and the public area. And they tend to lap rigid standards such as minimum lot size, like some of the older zoning codes, and fixed setbacks in most cases. So I'd like to hear from our panelists, you know, what are some of the advantages of a form-based code? What can they provide in community development? I'm not sure. So I would just start off by saying, when you think about any type of density, again, each community specifies for what density, what not. But when you think about density, if you don't combine that with design, it's really just incredible. In order for a community to get the advantages of a little bits of development, it has to be done in a quality way, and that's what the form-based codes allow. They do give you the flexibility for the builders and developers, but it requires that it be done right in the aesthetics and functionality. Especially, you know, if you get away from just the housing component, if you think about commercial areas, does it really matter what is being done within the building as long as the traffic is about the same, the outside looks good, and that outdoor dining or whatever community wishes to have? Does it really matter what's happening as long as it's clean? Right.
I would add to that, and excellent point. I applaud this group for adopting form-based codes two, almost three decades ago. It is absolutely the way the growth's to happen, because you're not projecting today's information over the next several decades and eliminating the possibility that maybe we could learn more along the way. The opposite of it, which we've dealt with this too, brings them out. Parameters that are unrelated, and you try to match them in one box and decide what works. Form-based code is the way to go, and no one manages that well right now.
I'll try to add a bit. As well as as a salesperson of homes in Belmont, the best thing that I've seen about the form-based is the variety that it allows us to get, and the improvements it allows us to make for each community that comes along. And that's been one of the most beneficial things for me, being part of the planning board, was to see that. Each time we listen to communities, we listen to their problems and their issues, and try to make the next one come along and improve upon that. And had we not been in that form-based, I think we would have been in much more stringent regulation, and we're able to be flexible when we need to be. And I think the main significant improvements with the community development set up. And that, for the long term, gives the variety that when a buyer comes into Belmont, there is something that makes, that matches their needs, hopefully, within the different communities, different neighborhoods within the community.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to back that over to Melissa.
So now we're going to talk a little bit about the concept of housing choice. And I think we can all agree that that means different things to different people, right? As a city planner and a public planner, we recognize that it's the community's vision and community's interpretation on how we want our housing choices to look like. And we look to our comprehensive land use plan as our guide, that shows what are different choices and where those might be located. And over the past couple of years, we've gone through an extensive update to our comprehensive land use plan that many of you around here were involved in. So we know that we look to that as a city and planners and, you know, different residents coming in and builders. Even on a regional level, we use this document for many ways. So keeping that in mind, from our perspective, what does housing choice mean to each of you and your profession? Along those lines, what can the city do to foster and promote the diversity of our newer community regarding housing choice?
I'll start again. So I like to think of housing choice as having a variety of housing in the community that responds to each, you know, an individual during their lifecycle. You know, you're going to want different things at different points in your life. And I think of it as, you know, just like you try to diversify your financial portfolio, and if you're working in the economy area, you want to have a diversity of job types, you want the same thing in housing. You don't want to have all the eggs in one basket, and it's to be diversified, so that people can choose up their population that may change every time.
Along those same lines, and if, the word mentioned earlier, affordable housing, actually, the real lifeline is housing affordability, because we need to be thinking about not this, the affordable housing, we need to be thinking about this house, this one, this one, because they all are linked together in terms of the price point. One thing we can't do, because it's impossible to force housing, because ultimately, the market decides what markets go by, okay? So we need to create the right parameters, which will create what you want to have happen. We can't mandate this house will be this much price, or try to make it that price, instead of the parameter that you need to be. At this point, I think Belmont's largely doing a good job with this, as it is evidenced by growth, and actually having this conversation means growth is still coming in your way. I would encourage, we're going to need more density. We're going to need more density. And part of the reason why we're going to need that is, we need to be thinking ahead towards transportation, and perhaps the light rail. And the light rail's going to come with density. So as we're thinking about housing choice, consider the density factor as where can the density go to where we can move people in and out, so that they can go Charlotte or where they're going, fill their jobs along the way. Usually with density, you then find lower price points, because you're not sharing the land cost, or you're sharing the land cost. Everybody wants to.
And I'll just add to that, too. I provided some numbers today, because I just have a county county degree, and that's just how I think. So I put together just some numbers after our conversations that we were having for this panel, to just give you some perspective, because if you're not looking at it all the time like that, you, you don't necessarily know where things are. Belmont versus Gaston County as a whole is kind of the perspective that I went with. And just to point out a few things here, I looked at the under-half-an-acre and over-half-an-acre comparisons, just to see, you know, where, where are the sales? And you'll see that Belmont, just like Gaston County, runs about 70% under half-an acre. So that's going to be all of your condos plus homes on smaller lots. So we stayed pretty consistent with Gaston County. But one thing I pointed out also in those numbers that I found a little surprising was in the condo market specifically, Belmont is 51% of all the condos sold in Gaston County are in Belmont. So that's a pretty high percentage of total there, and their average price point is $256,000. So these aren't small condos, they're a pretty nice setup there. The other big number that I would point out is just the overall average price. Belmont's average single-family home price is in the $363,000 mark compared to Gaston County's average of its $240,000. So Belmont is definitely a higher price point part of Gaston County. And in addition to that, I would also point out that Belmont makes up 25% of the sale dollars of Gaston County. So again, fairly significant we are as part of Gaston County. I just hope those numbers may bring some perspective to what we're talking about today. Do keep in mind that these numbers come from the multiple listing service, so it will not include every single new home. The new home builders don't put everything into the NLS, so the new numbers actually would be a little bit higher than what you see here. I'd say there's about at least half, 50%, would you say? That you put in the NLS?
Oh, yeah.
About 50%, would you say? So there's still some, some word there, but this is at least comparable, you know, Gaston County, Belmont, on a percentage level, so. What about you?
And if I had added something, I did make a note of the, thank you for bringing the cause. Here's a figure to keep in mind. I think there was $353,000 added to your own price, okay? From the builder end of that, our simple math on that is, how much does a lot cost on a $353,000 house? About $72,000, or about 20%. We can sometimes go to 21%. But then that's, that's what we're looking at, because that's important to kind of keep in mind. That's, that, that one figure is the largest figure in the cost of a house. Everything else breaks down from there.
A sort of follow-up question to that. You mentioned serving transportation and building and environment that will serve that. So if you think about housing choice and variety, can you, I mean, can you think of any areas that are good examples, or whether it's a community that's doing well, or a neighborhood that's unique, that provides the choice of housing? And then, you know, if you can think of anything now, or if you'll think of anything, we're always interested in learning.
I would point out McLean is a perfect example of that. The McLean community, as most of you are probably aware, has three significant different areas. The South Shore, which is the lakefront, where you will find the larger lots; the Conservancy, where you do find the mostly one-level homes on smaller lots; and now, the third one coming in is the Overlake, where it's a kind of a combination of both. You get a little larger lot, a little larger home, and it's been extremely successful from my point of view as a salesperson. Though I haven't sold any out there personally, but that's okay. We still resell, not necessarily new construction, but it's a wonderful example long-term that we will have something to offer in a variety of sizes, location, and development. I think they've done excellent job there.
I would also, if, if I may, the, another community that's done well, another neighborhood, especially with the backdrop of the original question, which I think was a lot of catalysts for what we're seeing here, side set backs. Backs the Village in Fort Bel. Backs the Village in Fort Bel started in the late 1990s, and then was a wonderful land plan, well-executed. They structured the game plan. It took about 15 years for it to be fully developed out, but they figured out the density thing, and they did provide the larger lots and the smaller lots, and they planned it well.
Very good, thank you. Now we're going to turn to Sally to dive into Belmont a little bit more.
Sure. Okay, so we've heard a little bit about the graphics, the county, and the shift in population that is coming. And so we'd like to ask, what are the current priorities for new home builders looking to build or purchase in Belmont? And are there any desired housing options not currently available in our area?
It's a two-part question.
Perhaps I should jump in first.
Sure.
With the question about, are there any desire, I'm sorry, we got first question again, Michelle.
What are the current priorities for new home buyers looking to build or purchase in Belmont? First part.
Okay. I can probably speak to the new home buyer a bit, and I know you can speak to the new home buyer as well as the resale. I think earlier you said, and I would absolutely echo, we're seeing a senior migration, okay? And this is the trailing grandparent, and now the new catalyst, the new push is, I want out of the Northeast for COVID reasons, I want out, I want more living in the room. That's driving a lot of what the housing is at this point. And then if I could even go ahead and tie it into the side set back question, because this is one we see, because McLean is apparently... is one we see, because McLean is a fairly tight neighborhood, okay? And sometimes we're close to the setback, sometimes we're not. The, the equation that you have to keep in mind is that two things have to happen to that work well. One, the house design has to work towards something that lives in the front and the back, not the side. So then, the same house plan won't work on a wide setback if it were a narrow setback. It's just obvious at that point. As well as, the rest of what needs to take place is, if, if I'm ever candid, most people don't live in the side yard of the house. Most people don't live in the side yard, even if they had a wide side yard. Most people are living in the front or the backyard, so we design the house so that it addresses the front and the back, and not as much the side. That's what the variety of the choice, coupled up with what you guys have said earlier about West Main, well, if we can cut two feet on the width of a lot, times 150, that's 30 square feet times two, that's 600 square feet of yard. They're not going to take care of it, because they don't have to. And that matters, that's probably what I'm saying. That's strictly on the new home side, and I'm sure that you can run it.
You know, the other thing that I would add to that is that Belmont is very fortunate in the variety of builders of new homes that we have. We don't just have one or two, we have, I don't know the exact number, you might tell me, probably 15, if you look at past and present, within the last 10 years, of the major home builders in that region, we have almost everyone has a neighborhood of some sort here in Belmont. That gives us great design variety. Each one looks a little different, neighborhood-wise. They've done excellent, the builders have, with feedback, where windows don't touch the other windows. I don't look into your kitchen, or you into mine, at my, you know, we can't really pass the sugar to each other, even though we're close enough. So they've done a great job with feedback with each development, each home design, to make sure that windows and, and the way that houses sit, you don't have two of the exact same styles, side by side, across the street from each other. Those things have really done a lot to help. I would say another one, a great example, is in some of the first neighborhoods that were pretty close together, we didn't think about the fact that nobody parks in their garage. They park on the driveway, because their garage is full of stuff. So we didn't necessarily have driveways that were long enough on a lot of them, but that has been a big improvement. You now find most driveways to these houses are long enough that they park a car in the driveway, so you have longer streets, and that's just another thing, or I think of improvements we made along the way, to continue to develop.
Allison, can I do a quick follow-up on that? So since you somehow, is there, have you heard of any housing option that we're really not supplying, or do you think we have enough diversity that meets the needs of the potential homeowners in Belmont?
Well, of course, you're always going to hear, you know, the price point in Belmont is gotten high. So we cannot please everyone. I cannot please the guy who's looking for $3,000 per feet for $150,000. It doesn't exist, and unfortunately, it doesn't exist much of anywhere, especially in the Southeast. So we're not that unusual to what we find. Yeah, the builders, on average, in Belmont is now the 300,000 price point and up. So that's just a part of where we are. I think Belmont has done a great job, too, with the balancing the apartments that we build. The condos, again, give an option to that buyer, who cannot get to that price point. And we, you know, see those sell wonderfully in the past couple of years. Like I said, about 50% of all the condos in Gaston County are sold in Belmont. So that's getting that buyer. But you don't ever please everybody, but I think we're doing a nice job.
Thank you. Speaking of regulations, we know that regulations change every time, to respond to changing conditions. This council here has actually implemented new overly district, traffic impact analysis requirements, to respond to growth concerns, for example. Some recognize that regulations impact all aspects of building and development, considering the private sector. And we're hoping now to hear a little bit about how, how city regulations impact some of those industries, how it affects the market, how, how do we play into our industry?
Sure, thank you, thank you. There's a need for regulation, and this is the only nation that is going to create it. Regulation, if I'm very candid, as we all know, is cost. The cost, the, the cost of that regulation is going to go in the house. Ultimately, the homebuyers are going to pay for the regulation. Currently, nationwide, about 24% of the cost of a home is due to some form of regulation, okay? About 24% of the cost of a home is due to some form of regulation. Most of that happens off a land, or in terms of stormwater, or in terms of zoning restrictions, whatever the case may be. I would encourage this, to remember something. You're making decisions decades ahead, which you, which is an awesome responsibility, because you're putting your DNA on somebody that's going to be your, or your children, and perhaps your grandchildren, to actually see what you have on them. That's an awesome responsibility, but also recognize, there, there's usually more than one right answer to that question, okay? And it's okay to, to perhaps seek out more than one right answer to, to that question, as you're considering something new, as you're thinking about another regulation, as you're planning for, or, or you're looking for something. There's probably more than one right answer, as to the decision.
Well, I'm going to actually, to go one more question, before we start the discussion. So it's no secret that the pandemic has changed how we work and live and so forth, and we don't really know if this is the new normal for the quarter. It may last a lot longer, it's like changing backwards, maybe, than the new normal. So with that in mind, do you see a shift in the housing market as far as building hype, future needs? I've presented a lot of webinars about the pandemic and growth, and I'd like to, while we have it here, I'd like to hear from you on how you think the pandemic, what may leave its mark in the housing industry growth.
Well, I think one thing is for sure, you know, people are spending more time in their, in their neighborhood. And so I think it makes it even more important for you to think about being an attractive neighborhood, and an attractive community, which you already are, but maintaining that status. Because, you know, we've heard that people are out, outside more, so they want more walking trails, they want more greenway, they want more sidewalk activity. You know, even though some places are closed, in terms of restaurants, people are actually out exploring more. And for me, that just makes having a choice community definitely more important. And this region will continue to grow. So we think about, you know, the downturn that we had in the, in the late 2000s. This region is resilient. Our economy is diverse. People do want to be here, they're coming from all over. And so this is a point in time where things are changing, but I don't think it's going to impact the trajectory that people want to be here. Transportation will still be issues, opportunities that may be to explore. And I would echo Alan's comment about making decisions for decades to come. It is an awesome responsibility, and I really enjoy hearing your value statement, the mission statement, about being visionary, because that's what it takes. This is the hard work, making the decisions when you have, there's a, there's a right in your face, but when you think about the long term, and what you're, what you're doing, what, what the leaders before you did to make that work into a great place, continuing that legacy is so important. I would say without question, we're already seeing the changes in request for home office technology, ensuring you have all the connectivity that you could possibly have within the home, which impacts some of the older homes needing improvements and those type of things. So definitely already seeing that, and I expect it to continue. We're, we're seeing a trend of moving to smaller houses. I'm not sure that it's going to be.
On this volatility, you both said that. That's what we've been hearing. That coupled with the last one, which was broadband capability. It was no more than a week ago, we had a call about McLean, and they were in the Northeast, and their question was, do you have gigabit speed, and can you, and they long-stimulated technical question that I didn't want to answer. But the answer was, did, but, but the point was, it wasn't that long ago, they weren't going to call up and ask, what kind of internet do you have? But that's what they're going to know now. And then the other thing, the interesting shift on the housing, is that we heard for a long time, right, multi-generation old grandma's going to move in, so everyone was prepared for the guest bedroom on the main level, and stuff like that. Well, now, we're also looking at hearing more about, we need to make sure we can get our whole family in this house. Because if this comes around again, son and daughter might be coming home from college, they might be coming here or there, and so, not that the house is getting bigger, it's housing will live multi-generation. It's not just grandma coming back, people coming back for a while. That, that we're absolutely hearing. That's going to be substantial.
Well, that concludes the questions that we prepared, so we wanted to open it up to the council and the planning board to answer questions, and then give the panel the ability to answer some.
Yeah, I might ask a question to the panel. First of all, happy January.
He's doing great, thank you, Allison.
Good. I think if we build residences, we have to have balance with businesses as well. You don't have, that phrase is going to go sky high. You've got to have businesses right there. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely. Root dogs have to have the business, and businesses need the root dogs.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, don't just focus on residential.
Yeah. But I would, I have a follow-up on that. So you mentioned Baxter, but now things aren't great, you know? But they have restaurants in there. What all did Baxter have? Because I don't see that around here. I don't see, I see shopping center in the rear, but I don't see all of the things in Baxter country.
Baxter was a master planning community, which involved the residential, lots, and commercial, multifamily, and some more out there like that. That's not here, okay? I'd like to think that we can have a well-heeled developer show up and say, I'd like to turn 1,200 acres to have that big Baxter waters, and to a neighborhood like that. We don't have that, but I'm worried it's using in terms of the names and density equation, well, okay?
I would add on to that, that the Baxters, the Burtneils, the Danversneils, what they're doing is recreating what you already have here. I mean, they have what they call a Main Street, but they're recreating a Main Street. So you've got that here in the core. Now, whether or not you would want that, you know, balanced peninsula, that would be another choice, if you needed additional, you know, commercial development down that way. But it, it is interesting, it's what's, what's always new again.
Right, I would add to that, too, that when I get in deep contact to the area, the two places that I want to see are Belmont and Fort Mill. So I have South Carolina licenses, I ever needed, so I do end up, most of the time, showing both to a lot of clients. And I would agree that what we have is a traditional historic downtown, which unfortunately, Fort Mill is really trying to bring their older area back up to that. But Baxter recreated it, it made its own. And I think, again, our commercial has been behind since the downturn. I don't think, I think you just finally are catching up with our Aristeaden Shopping Center, the one across the street there, at South Creek Village. So the commercial is still catching up somewhat, but absolutely, everybody wants to, you know, where, what are the walkable neighborhoods to downtown? And, you know, you've got to stay under a mile, really, for most people, we consider that walkable, you know? So we don't have a lot of neighborhoods yet, but I think the Chronicle, some other projects that are already planned are going to continue to create that environment, that we're, you know, we're explaining to people now that they will be able to see it, I think, in the next year.
I agree. First of all, can we ban the phrase "do normal"?
Yes, I would.
Ban. Secondly, this is, this is great, good information, but I was hoping we'd translate it more, you know, the purview, the, the issue that prompted us in this discussion was, you know, concerns about these side setbacks, especially in some of the newer neighborhoods. And so I was hoping we could translate some of this stuff, some of these facts, some of this data, into, you know, what were, what, if anything, might need to be done about, about that. And Martha, I don't, you know, this was your idea originally, so you can probably speak to your concerns better than, than I can, but that's sort of what I'm interested in, is what, you know, let's, let's take these generalities and, you know, is it going to translate into something specific with these side setbacks, or not?
Yeah, I'm one of the ones who brought that up, because past Aristeaden, turn into the old Amsterdam subdivision, we now have thousands that look like they're jammed up together, some of the side setbacks. And a lot of what you want with this small town living is the reception thing. So if I'm seeing that, and they look crowded, I think it's better to have townhouses. And we talked about that you want to have single-family, picture across from single-family, but it really doesn't have the white wood. Part of it is the front and side, and that kind of thing. So we're looking at a huge number of townhouses, and really tight houses. To my way of thinking, since we're looking at light rail, over the past several years that I was with, we spoke, and we were blown out of water in a bad way, but we still won the battle. But if we're going to get light rail to come here, we need to push all the apartments there. My way of thinking, we need to fix the side setbacks just a little bit, because I don't want people to feel like they're in a crowded, dense area, and I'm afraid that's really it. But that's what I was wanting to do, and we're going to talk about this, this kind of thing. Because we all need to figure out that that's playing.
Go ahead, ask this up to Martha, that you exactly right about the density, and we're getting like that. We're, we're getting like that, as far as I know, all of you here seem to be getting this, so the density gains you on the quarter, that would seem to be a natural place. But Jim's point, I mean, he's exactly right. We have choice in housing in Belmont. We've got apartments that's a family, we've got condos, fountains. I mean, one of what's an issue, and what we're hearing, I think, in more of this region, is proximity. And that's the question at hand, proximity.
To each other, the units to each other, right.
Perception, and we're still close to each other. And I don't know if I'm taking this from your argument, but I think that's what I'm hearing, is that we need the density, which means that even the houses closer together. But I honestly like the argument that if we push these houses a part of it, that it's going to drastically affect the density so much, it's going to adversely affect us. We already have density, we got apartments. When light rail comes, even before it, once it's absolutely assured, you know, the corridor, I think the bridge through Belmont's makes a little bit of a difference. I mean, not in realty, but I think that it seems to be fair enough, because that's where I would want it, or a little expensive condo, or office space. So, I understand what you're saying, we've got to somewhat, we've got to be somewhat responsible for what the public perception, and what the citizens want in Belmont. But here's my question to you, if we increase the side setbacks, I, I don't think the world would affect the density to a point where it could adversely affect us. I mean, does that, do you feel that way? Am I wrong?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for kind of getting us back to why we're here. The, I would, I would offer a couple- The, I would offer a couple of faults on that. One is, and I will go back to Baxter again, back to 20 years ago, I think you would have had a similar impression. What you don't have yet, in that area behind Aristead, is mature landscaping. And you've got to give the mature landscaping in place for it visually to feel better, okay? It's just part of what happens. The plants need to fill in so that it feels better and breaks the sightline. It gives you something else in the relief of the irritation itself, other than just the side elements to it. That's probably number one. Number two, width. Jim, probably not. Okay, let's just put the metrics to it, okay? If we increase the side setback, two feet, two feet on both sides, okay? That's about $6,000 in additional cost for the home, my cost for the home in McLean. Considering when you're foot of that front, it's costing about $15,000 for the when you're foot of that. So, does it matter? Only as we get back to housing, to the village, okay? For back there, okay? I'm not arguing for setbacks have to be small, you see, there's a practical side and $6,000 does come into play.
Is that the cost for the neighborhood behind Aristead in that same scenario?
I would imagine their cost is probably higher because the land loss was higher there, okay?
And the other thing, I'm just going to remind everyone, for whoever's public that I'm aware of, is our, again, we're form-based and the setbacks are proportional to the lot. So it's 20% of your lot size, your lot width, you need to provide a setback. So you have those alley load products and we purposely, on a collector road, made the houses on the collector road, not have driveway, driveway, driveway. We've modified the regulations and negotiated with them to say, "No, they need to be alley-loaded because we don't want overhanging vehicles and sidewalk or all these cars, potential collision points." So to correct one issue, we are like, "Okay, we need alley load." But then they have that flexibility then with their alley load with the lot width, which means their setbacks can be smaller. So we definitely could look at, take a closer look on collector roads that face, where units are facing, maybe establish a minimum width. If it's across from a more established neighborhood that may have half-bigger lots or larger lots that, then again, better blend, if they're going to be detached, they blend better with the neighborhood across the street. They could still be alley-loaded, but we can make them be wider lots and so forth. So there's some things we can do productized based on location. But again, setbacks are based upon lot width, so... And then you mentioned, which I thought was great, and I heard that when we first approved Belmont Town Center, we tried very hard to make it blend with this existing neighborhood. So they said they have to be detached homes that were across from each other, but right, they are alley loaded very small compared to across the street. You indicated you would have been more comfortable with townhomes, a totally different housing type, and they would have been alley loaded too, but it would have given you the tightness appearance, so...
So let me ask you a question. Can you keep your question on, when the council and shirt now we're on playing and doing, we increase the length of the driveway from 20 to 30?
Correct.
And also to your question about increasing the cost, since we've done that, how adversely does that affect sales of your homes and your driveways? Just because we increase something, because we need to improve the market, I would speculate that if the houses haven't selling, I think we also increase the front setback off of the roof.
Yeah.
I mean, just because you've made the changes. I mean, we saw the driveways, the building community was trying to point the page long enough for the driveway. I was telling you my trip was pointing long enough for the driveway. So I'll sit right there for the driveway. And so, I think that's what I'm getting at, you know, council is making changes based on things that we see aren't working in the public perception, in public desire, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I just, I mean, it's a good point in that, you know, I don't think any of us is saying that any change could happen in the vacuum. Obviously there's going to be, you know, if we tinker one way, it's going to have effects in the rest. It's not a vacuum, but, you know, that's why we're putting the position we're in, that, you know, we need to analyze and we need to decide, "All right, if we do this, this might be the consequence of that," or, "Do we think that that's an acceptable balance? It's an acceptable trade-off?" And, you know, perceive accordingly. But, you know, definitely, whatever we do is going to have other consequences on other aspects of things, but that's why we get paid the big bucks and make those decisions and weigh, weigh all the different trade-offs and decide how we want to do it. So, you know, absolutely, there could be, you know, some consequences. You know, on the one hand, we want housing affordability, on the other hand, we want less tightness in the neighborhoods. And, you know, yes, there might be a trade-off, but, you know, that's kind of what we're here for. So we've just got to weigh them and decide, you know, each side of the arrow.
So one thing I see in the shift, and you mentioned the driveway, this is the 30 feet back, right? Yes, we've resolved the issue of vehicles hanging over the sidewalk and that's when they're not parking tandem, that still occurs. But one thing that we've seen, seeing the shift in the building form is, so our front yard setback is 20 feet, the garage pad needs to be 30 feet. So it was originally thought by doing that, we would have recessed garages. So we would still keep the front porch and that social interaction, the four ways of your neighbors walking by and we're sitting out there talking to our neighbors. But what I've seen more recently is a shift in that instead of recessed garages, and I'm not sure how that affects the market, they're just pushing everything back 30 feet. And we're getting more of a lock, the front is a little more flat. Still has some articulations, but it's pushed back the front of the house. And they'll just say, "Oh, use the 30 feet for the entire front setback." So it does affect the layout of the house and there's been changes at the state level with regard to our authority to regulate single-family, and you guys are aware of the single-family architecture that affects floor plans. So we can't require that the garage be recessed and so forth. And so we continue to work with the building industry on looking at what their form is and how they're accommodating what we call the market or their customers, our future residents, and how our regulations impact. So there is a reaction to every action that we do. We tried to resolve the short driveway and driveways on Collector Road, on Stowe Road, but then we turned around and by doing that, we made too small, the housing choice of the smaller homes, they look like they're more compact together. So we try to resolve one issue, then once it's in the built form, we can go by there and say, "Ah, yeah, so this is the outcome." So we try to evolve in our developments and regulations. But yeah, everything we change, it has a reaction.
I'm going to need to step out, but I think you addressed my question. I think my thought is, just from listening to everybody speak, is it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. And it's, I don't know if there's a way where staff or the planning board can meet and look at, you know, neighborhoods in different proximities to our Main Street, or neighborhoods in different proximities to Wilkens Boulevard, or 85, or down to Peninsula, and maybe come up with some just metrics. Because I think Hawthorne and Eagle Park have the small setbacks, and they look good, but then there's other neighborhoods with the small setbacks that don't look good.
Right.
But that's my opinion, which is, well, that's tough to enforce too. So I don't know if there's some way to kind of look at proximity to other neighborhoods and try to keep things consistent and matched, but also offer maybe in a neighborhood where it makes sense to look further out, to have different roles around those pads of land and, or run it out of land. But I would think that maybe staff or planning board could look at some of those things and say, "We want to expand the side yard setbacks in these areas for these reasons, to make it more traditional or less traditional."
We can do that, we can go field trips. I'm used to taking planning boards down to Baxter Village, that's a great community to look at.
I think doing more mature landscaping too would be another option.
That is, yes.
Well, one thing, you know, hopefully, once the tree organs pass, we won't have the situation that we had at town, the town center. Quite a lot goes to your way, you know, because I live out there in Stowe Point, and, you know, you head off this forest basically, on that side of Stowe Road, across from the high school, and then one day, there's like nothing there. And, you know, the starkness of that, well, with this new tree organs, hopefully, the maintenance and more of the existing canopy would prevent that from happening. And, you know, it will look good one day, but it doesn't look all that great.
Right, I could ask another point. I think Stowe Road was a very difficult one, no matter what, because of what you just said, it was all trees, it was all woods forever. I lived in Stowe Point as well. And it's two stories across from one stories. And it was going to have to be two stories, it was never going to be ranch-style homes down that side that looked like across the street. So it was a very difficult one from the beginning to be developed. I think also, as we see the next neighborhood behind there continue to develop and evolve because they're going to be a little further apart, a little more yards on those, it's going to balance better. Perception and visual, most people can't visualize any of it. They need to see it, that's why I sell resale homes, because they're done, they're complete. People can walk in and decide if they like it or not. They have very hard time building for themselves in construction, that's just the norm, the basic bar. So I think we'll see that evolve and there, but again, it was a very difficult spot because of its way it was and the way it is. And again, same Eagle Park was that way, it was so stark, if people can remember when there were no trees or there were these little itty-bitty trees. Now you drive through there and you can't park because the trees were so big on the front streets. And the same was in Baxter, you know, years ago when it was started and it didn't look quite right, but now it looks like it's always been that way. So we'll, I think, see some improvements just with that.
So, just a few comments. My view on this, and I think that we've got Belmont, this is city, we have a few things going for us, and Fortis can be a little confusing. You know, we've got a, you know, some pressure by the East Street, it's been very long. With all of this going on, you know, we are closer to Charlotte Airport than, or Charlotte. And then we've also got the, all the natural amenities and all of that. The other upside, I guess, is that a lot of the available, developable land is down at Peninsula, which is serviced by a single, two-lane highway. And, you know, we kind of got to live with the infrastructure that we've got. So that area in particular is an area that I'm very hesitant to greenlight, I mean, sort of density on, just because it's already, it's pretty messed, well, at least the rush hour prior to the pandemic. And I think that what's already been, when you have for that area, anything additional down there will just create additional complications. So I think that's something that we need to be thinking about, particularly in that part of town.
Which the council did take great action to address that very issue for the properties in Belmont proper, like it's the county. We placed an overlay restricting naturally down zone with this overlay, the density. So most of our density that we get down there is wrapped to dwelling use to greater. So, yeah, so we've taken action on that.
Right, well, and the other thing that I just, I feel like with the way the market is current, actually, we've got more people who want to come into Belmont than we could ever, even if we could develop areas where it's in town, accommodate. Especially when we get the light rail and the experience in Southland, it's, I mean, I don't think a lot of the problem is attracting, attracting any kind of density at all. So I don't know that we necessarily need to be, at least for my perspective, I'm not so concerned about that stuff coming, because I think it's going to come naturally. So at least from a policy perspective, I don't know necessarily hitting the gas on stuff. And, you know, as far as the setbacks go, I think that, you know, that stuff is something I'm looking to look at. And if we need to look at it in conjunction with, you know, lotlets and stuff like that to make it work, you know, I'm open to having a broader conversation on that too.
Great.
So, those are just my thoughts.
I think it's always beneficial for us to visit neighborhoods and walk it, really feel it, and look at the community, look at the building form, the lot sizes and setbacks, the feel in all types of neighborhoods, because it is, it is a community's decision on how it wants to build out and grow. So sometimes looking at things on paper and so forth, you know, it's just hard to conceptualize. I always like to walk it and then you're feeling, you're looking at it, are the windows matching up across from the kitchen where you're passing your mustard through or so forth? So we can definitely pick some different communities and walk through them, and if we want to coordinate a visit down to Baxter Village, we can arrange that as well.
Is that where we went down in Fort Mill? No, different, different. We went to Delwell.
Yeah, we went to Delwell. Now Baxter Village is like a little mini-town, it has a library, a school, Y M C A, yes, it's very well-planned.
Kind of like Burtneil.
It's bigger than Burtneil.
Yeah.
I would add too, I think all the subdivisions, they are mostly conditional.
Yes.
And so I think that gives us opportunity. It may, this particular development, you know, you may want to give a little bit on the side and have some relief to develop or somewhere else in that subdivision. I mean, I don't know if, one, there's not a cookie cutter, I just don't want to get wherever I want, but if we have that flexibility and not be so rigid, as Kevin said earlier, I think it's a win-win for both the other board and those individuals.
What you'll see in Baxter, which is five-foot side yards, four, five-foot side yards throughout that area.
There must be a reason that worked, or, you know, I don't know what caused that to work. And I don't know if it's perception like Martha talked about, it's start different when it's on the other side of the road, you know, that's what we have to deal with in our...
Right, this is, it all came on together, it's master plans and different product types, there's a progression, the larger houses are back a bit from the community and the tighter, more compact designs closer to the main street.
Actually, aren't some of the ones that, I don't know, some of them are eight feet apart and some 10, and it starts through there?
Uh, which ones?
I think the first one and instead are, some of them eight and some of them 10.
Yeah, so...
I think that two feet thing could be different.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yes, there was, so setbacks generally, when it's in a block or a community, we have a percentage of the lot width, it should be applied equally throughout the community. What was, what was unusual about the homes that you pointed out in that section, they started out uniform and then one or two of them shifted. And so shifts, it really throws off the, there's not a balanced width, and then there's a 10-foot open space, so you drive by, you may see 14 feet, because 10 feet is a open space, and then it just throws everything off. So that depth, the setbacks could have been applied better in that road, and I think it would look more balanced. And, yeah, there are some things we could have done differently to address that.
So what, what's the consensus then, what do we want to go out and do as a result of this productive discussion?
I have a question about lot...
I have a question about lot widths and, you know, sort of the performance that you guys deal with. Is there an opportunity to scale the lot width? Not, not just be 20% of lot width, but scale it up or down depending on what kind of community it is? So that you can promote higher density communities in some areas? And if developer wants and recognizes that the need, because we talked about need in Belmont, right? We want variety or even for that matter. So if, if we work with the homeowners, is there a sweet spot? Is there something that we can work together to find that metric, the nature season? Say this lot width is this setback and a nice setback.
Interesting perspective, perhaps there is. Also bear in mind, generally, this is just general motivation. As your home price goes up, the side setback is going to go up a bit. Because the buyer can afford it and the buyer may very well expect it. So then this isn't a problem across all your price, but the problem is your lower end of your price point. It was a problem at all. I would also offer, fully on you later, but earlier I had said there's more than one right answer. And y'all thought up the front driveway.
Yeah.
So the solution you went to was make the driveway longer. Why did you make it shorter? You could have made it shorter and said driveways cannot be between 12 feet and 22 feet. And then created opportunity for on-street parking. That's my point about there's two different ways it could have gone. I don't know that situation. I'm not indicting that decision. But there was two different ways it could have gone to be. Because on-street parking is not a bad thing if you plan for it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we tried to get on-street parking and off-street as well. But again, some of our struggle is most people do not use their garages except for storage. And, and what I've seen is during the pandemic, college kids, everybody's at home. So you drive down the street and there's four or five cars trying to find a parking spot at a particular house. So you can really see the parking issue now.
That's another part of this on, on the updates and setbacks. So the avenue about which we would consult at would be overlay districts. Is that correct? We can create overlay districts along the Wilkinson Court or instead setbacks based on those different areas or?
No, so again, we're form based, so we go by product type. So townhomes or say detached alley lots versus a front load, they have different widths and are built differently and function differently. So we would, first of all, our Conference of Land Use Plan identifies building types and identifies the area based on the Conference of Land Use Plan of where those use types should be. So on the peninsula should be primarily detached, single family, right? We put an overlay on it to reduce the density. Then we have what we call village centers. Belmont Town Center is in a village center. It was intended to be a compact mixed-use area. We have a school. We have a commercial center. We have townhomes. And as the village center goes out, then on the periphery, you start transitioning to single-family detached, more of a suburban-like look. So what, the only area that's not like that is our core area, which is like our downtown walkable. So we do have a plan on the building types, location. And then the ordinance helps implement that vision in the corridor on Wilkinson. Yes, we, we have envisioned mixed use in that area. We're currently working with hats on the silver line to on transit oriented development, which will help us really establish regulations and overlay. We will do overlay districts there. But otherwise, we use our Conference of Land Use Plan, which again was supported by the community and developed by the community, looking at building types in the right location. Now we're fine tuning it down to maybe we need to take a closer look at our setbacks and nail it down to a better understanding of where they can be.
Let's say to the Belmont comment, now we lack full counsel on the occasion of the council members deciding. If you can read a map, then you can see a lot of success in Belmont. And if there's more points, proximity to Charlotte, airport, 85, 27, 16, Lake. So people wanting to build in Belmont or live in Belmont, that's a good problem. Economies and everything are selling because of proximity. Belmont builds out, it's a hot spot, it'll be a part of the mess. But when we're on P and D talking about the driveways, you know, something I would remember Ron Cook, when I was talking, former council member. And he said, it's really a question of what you want Belmont to look like. And that's a lot of it, what we want the community to look like. And we want a little more of what might be considered a traditional built with more separation of houses. I mean, there is a place for density and there is a place where we don't want it. Now, I'll say, you know, the reason I love this process a lot, I'm speaking about, I'm guessing, we hear from a lot of people, the white line people about proximity houses. I would hear a lot about trees. And the development of the Black Harris Theater is probably one single event that sparked the interest in tree ones. People really shocked by the appearance of. And I think that's also a piece of perception. You know, it's not always what is, it's what you think and do it. And there is a question for council, is, you know, finding that balance between what you want Belmont to look like and what kind of answer do you want and where do you want?
And again, we can have a future workshop where we review the long range plan, look at where we had identified density, what form that density the, or is taking, is taking, and then go visit the area and see if that is, is still the direction of this council. Again, go, go walk through the community. You know, if we establish our common use, Conservancy is one of our fastest growing, especially for empty nesters, that the population, single story or story and a half. And price points well over 300,000. And those setbacks are five feet. And they're, they're ramped. So, you know, again, that was the master plan, went through a conditional zoning. So we had some ideas about what we were going to get. So I think it's important to see the products, whether it's a smaller single family or a townhome or an alley load, to actually not just look at it on paper and a map of locations, but walk the community, equal park, diverse, still density, I think, just around four dwelling use to the acre. I heard it was shocking when they cleared the trees. Originally one of our most successful neighborhoods. Again, do we want all of Belmont to look like that? No, as you get off, down the peninsula, we want it to change more suburban and that's, you know, the infrastructure can support it as well. So we can take a look at it for a future workshop of the plan to go visit some places if that's what the council on board would.
And is there a possibility, Charlie, we can take a trip to Baxter Village, it should look like.
Sure. So I would suggest that, you know, we look at communities like Baxter and some other places. But also, now that we have two buses, we can all ride together, both in one of the vans and tour Belmont.
Yeah.
And let's look at areas of Belmont.
We want.
The older parts of town, the newer parts of town, every part. And Southern End is totally different than the core, the old part and the river. So let's, these two YouTube boards, you get a plan on the front end and then, you know, then we can just sort of assume that everything's okay. But let's, you know, let's go through and look. And outside, separate and apart from this discussion about the side yard setbacks, to the bigger picture, let's, I'd like for us to take a trip, kind of walk through, ride through different parts of town for neighborhood. And just take a, what do we like? What, what, what do we miss? What should we have done differently? What can we do different next time? And so that we can make sure that, again, your plans and your ordinances are, are resulted in projects, neighborhoods that you can do like, not suit to your point. I can have a merry close and have a, and then council turn, sort of next steps, what we want to do. This is one of those issues where we can talk about it, talk about it, talk about it, and talk about it. And next, if it's not next year, we can do something about it. So I don't know what the urgency is. Is this something that you're ready to, let's, let's have some serious discussion on details? But we didn't talk about it for a while. And it's details, that's why I'm glad we had the panel here. Because if, if we were just, you're the planning board of the council. I mean, the ordinance, whatever you want. But I want to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make an informed decision. And so if we wouldn't say, well, let's have a ten yard side setback, so we have our houses really far apart, you can do it. But I want to make sure that you fully understand the implications of that and make sure the staff has enough time to analyze, what we do with that, what does that mean for everything else on the land side? What does that mean for our utilities? And again, the further we spread our buildings apart, the higher the burden has to pay for the streets, the sidewalks, the curb, the trees, the water and sewer. So there's, there's, there's cost of bill on the front end, which means cost of the buyer on the front end. But the, once it's the city's infrastructure, it's our cost to me. And so obviously, the more people we have paying into resurfacing one mile of road or replacing one mile of waterline, the better it is financially. And I would never suggest that we make financial decisions when we're, when you plan, you set one component. You know, you got with the plan, you got a vision. But we want to make sure that ideally neighbors take themselves over time. And so if we want to kind of spread it out, that's for all we reduce it, which is exactly what I am. We've got to make up for that somewhere else. So as we're planning for transit, higher density development on Wilkinson, you know, our top plan calls for higher density development downtown and village centers downtown, where we have a street network, where we have the infrastructure in place to handle some level of density. Maybe not everything that we talked about recently, but some level of density. That's what your plan calls for. The village centers are raw land. The plans will take care of those. But you want to make sure that you have that, you know, just always get a replacement density. But when it comes time for density, well, it needs to be in another place. So we need to, we've got it on our map where we've identified where the density should be. And so as, as the council is taking steps to dial down the density on the next one, the next step may be looking at separating the houses. But we're still getting two, three units acre, but they're clustered together. And you've got, you know, all of a sudden, open space to make up for it. And maybe that we don't want that anymore. We want the houses going farther apart. So that it ends up being potentially fewer units in a neighborhood that is there for two or four on the street. So, you know, I want us to have this discussion. I know we need to get to action. But I wanted at least kind of set the table so that you get the information. You know, unfortunately, we're in a growing area with the dynamic economy and people who just can get from all over the country. So I, Michelle, unless you can give us a pull, I don't know that we can, we can just opt out of being in Charlotte. So, so if we can't opt out of being here, then we've got to manage what's coming. And that's one of your goals, manage to grow that back and spread. It sounds like, you know, the side yard setback is one piece of all of this. And so I don't want us to get kind of focused on that. We need to address it and probably figure out, maybe instead of having the setback tied to the zoning, tie this type of zoning decision, so that we don't outlaw equal park. But we don't want equal park down, you know, on Requiem Road or something. So maybe tie it to the zoning district, so that your general residential, whether it's rural or residential, it is a little more spread out and it's more suburban. And there's a place where that is becoming a valid challenge choices. So that would allow us to still have the moderate density that we don't want density where it's appropriated, where we can plan for, but not at where we don't want. So, and there will be other side yard setback issues at Belmont. I do think that, you know, it's good discussion. It's good to kind of set where we are and get perspective from the experts and then take trips around town too, like, then take trips outside of town and to see what other, what other communities are doing. And just, and I think we're in that for, looking at, handling that for.
You have to give details about things in the details. Because one of the things we've been told several past several years is people want small houses and small lots. Everything in Belmont is selling hundreds of small houses and small lots, though large houses, large lots. So there's a lot of situation that's, I think, we need to look at the details and the size. Okay, you can, we do some of both and we make it all work for people to hire in, to support that tax base. Or because we never had numbers, so we need to come on by hiring and then dispel. If we can do that and make the town look like we think it should, then I think that's the direction we're in.
Regarding timeframe, I don't have a rest of the council to deal with. Like I said, we've had discussions on some things that should stretch out forever and take action. But they probably shouldn't. It would be universal to single housing, and I desire to put some sort of target there. And I guess I'll be up to you drastically for us to look at Belmont, for us to go and take a few trips to the neighborhoods, for us to detect the effects and any changes. Can you see that 90 days, 120?
David, do you know when the new bus is going to be here and ready to go on a trip?
I don't know. The home is draft day, a lot of our, I believe, the trip is going to be certified. I think then we're going to, we're going to swap and check. What they're going to do is, probably, we know that.
Well, within a month, maybe. So maybe we can shoot for sometime in October, late October, we can have a field trip.
And go trick with you.
Yeah, that's fine. Go in caution.
Yeah, and then, yeah, we'll go on Thursday for a time. Yeah, so if we, if we take a field trip sometime in October, and now it's late September, so late October, then we can split, take notes on that. And then maybe the, I think the planning board's done well is get some smaller working groups, some committee to really hone in on the details of something, on an issue. That way you're not having the entire board always doing it. You have the committee that you trust to look at these issues, bring it back to the board itself. Or like mentioned, so I would suggest that after the work, if I can, the field trip, we get kind of a working group of the planning board to work with, the planning staff to come up with recommendations that we can take from the full planning board and council. And certainly, you know, I want to continue the discussion between the planning board and the council. So, you know, as the planning board committee, if that's what you choose to do, and take kind of reports out, please let up, keep us in the loop so that I can provide information to the council. We need to have another joint workshop to discuss kind of the product and the recommendation. We could do that before we get to the actual. And we can, I mean, this is something we can get done by the end of the year. So then we can kind of put a timeline. And this, this is obviously, this management of Baxter is one of your three main goals. So this, this would be open. And it deals with infrastructure and it deals with transportation, so this is sort of a three for one.
But I do agree with Richard that, you know, we can set some target dates. And I spent five years in academia, so I know all about talking about things endlessly without ever doing anything about them. So, you know, it's great to continue to have discussions, and we simply don't want to ram anything or act too quickly. But, you know, I do think it's good to set targets and like, all right, let's, you know, let's not just have our September 2021 meeting and still be spinning our wheels and talking about them.
Right. If it's realistic, I'd like to probably get some sort of testament about it in the.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, we got them too, because we've already seen, and I don't know what firm you might use, but my dad talks about smooth operators. He talks about smooth operators, we saw that, and we need to be able to tell them. Okay, because that's, we need to have all the details, everything worked out perfectly, because we're going to get taken advantage of, and we didn't know what to do about it.
No, I think having, you know, a text man, uh, right, right. I know that's, that's a nice part of that.
And then that would be a text amendment ready for the November planning board and December city council meeting. So we'll start back our dates up to now.
Yeah.
Be about a month, because this is something that's been worth, so that, that's multiple meetings.
Just looking right at you.
He's looking right at you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to.
Well, so we have direction, we will target and hit that, those states, and I want to take this and thank all of you for coming, and any half the cops, please email them to us, and we'll tap on the information, so thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Give him a big hand.
Man, if we take a, like, a five-minute break, and we make the water sewer discussion, and then we can.
...through the coal ash issue. So I'll give you just a very brief background and send the packet. But so the city council for many years had a policy that we would extend water and sewer outside the city limits, but only with city council approval and generally speaking with annexation into the city. And so if you want to get city water and sewer, you have to be in the city. We, the council has approved extensions of water service outside the city limits. Probably very, very few exceptions on the sewer side. And as far as I know, council is very consistent. If you want city sewer service, you have to annex. If you want water service, we do serve some outside customers and they pay double rates ultimately in the city limits. And so the council approved a policy, probably getting specific requests. So there was a policy created in nineteen ninety-eight that said it had to give these requests for folks outside the city limits who wanted water and or sewer. That's what the city council staff can approve. So there was a policy in place. It's been amended. For those of you that were all in council, twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the Water Sewer Committee met regularly, particularly during that HB six thirty Duke Energy coal ash issue. Water Sewer Committee, as we know it now, as state law changes and then add requests came in. So in twenty fifteen, the council revised the policy because by that point we had a water main down South Point Road and Lower Armstrong Road. And there were several one-off individual houses or individual businesses that wanted city water for whatever reason. And so the council revised the policy and said that if properties front South Point Road, Armstrong Road, have an existing, an existing housing or an existing business towards the side of a planned single unit or single business, single residential, single residential business, you could connect to city water. But any proposed subdivision that's outside the city limits has to be annexed in order to get city water and sewer.
And when you say planned, has to be planned out of that?
Yeah, so if you had a house, if you had a lot, you're going to build a house on it. Yeah. And so, but if you, if you were proposing subdivided properties, if you had ten acres out in county, you want to subdivide it into X number of homes, you had one in city water and or sewer, it had to be annexed. So we, so in twenty fifteen, council made the distinction between a single home, single business versus a future subdivision, a future, you know, multiple businesses coming together. So then in twenty seventeen, the council, the committee and the council amended the policy again in response to the state law, the House Bill six thirty, which required Duke Energy to run water lines and force mains with all the areas within half a mile of the borders of the coal ash in town, the coal ash basin on Plan Alon campus. So Duke Energy ran water lines, not sewer, just water, ran water lines to existing neighborhoods, to roads that were not served by city water. So Duke made that investment, turned the, turned the lines over to the city and then made connections to, I forget the exact number, but some, a little over two hundred houses. So those were existing customers, those were existing residential houses because those were on private wells that part of the state were contaminated by bottom of coal ash. So if there was not a house on the site, Duke still ran the, if it was in that half mile, Duke still ran the line to get to the next house. If it was a vacant lot, then Duke was not connecting those vacant lots because vacant lots don't have people living on them. Therefore, there was no health hazard from bringing groundwater because there was no well. So as Duke was extending water lines in that part of the peninsula in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, and I guess part of twenty eighteen, they did pass the vacant property to get to existing users, existing houses. So those vacant, those vacant parcels all of a sudden have city water in front of them. And so we started to get a request from those owners, I'd like to connect to city water to build a house. So we allowed them because they, we revised the policy to allow single houses to connect to the system. And then we started to get a request from people who said, you know what, I'd like to develop that land for multiple houses. You know, we had some wide lots, we had some deep lots. And so developers came in and said, we would like to, to develop this property, bigger tract of land, but we want a new city water, a new subdivision. We don't want city sewer, we just want city water. And so the committee and the council at the time said that in twenty eighteen, they revised the policy again and said that if somebody wanted to build a minor subdivision, which is eight or fewer lots and no extension of infrastructure, you don't have to put in roads, you don't have to put in new water lines, you just have, say you have a wide rectangular piece of property, a square piece of property, which you could just subdivide and create no more than eight lots, but you're not building a street, you're not doing any other infrastructure improvements, then we would let those situations, those examples connect to city water. So the council said, you can connect to city water, you're going to come, you know, to the staff at that point, if you can show that you're, if you're within that half mile boundary, that HB six thirty boundary, and you're not, and you're creating a minor subdivision, you're not extending infrastructure, then you can connect to city water and you do not have to be annexed. But if you were doing either, so if you, but if you wanted to do a major subdivision, which is more than eight lots, or required putting in a street, you know, maybe have a relatively narrow front, so you had to go to the streets to get to the back part of the property, that's considered a major subdivision. Putting in infrastructure or building more than eight houses, that was a major subdivision and that had to be annexed in order to connect to city water. So the distinction sort of shifted in twenty eighteen to minor subdivisions versus major subdivisions. For minor subdivisions, you do not have to be annexed, major subdivisions did have to be annexed. And this was, again, in response to one-off requests, then became multiple one-off requests in a lot of meetings. So instead of just looking at these individually, the committee and the council said, let's update our policy so we give staff clear direction if somebody comes in on how to do it. And so it's not always going back to the council. So that has worked well. There, there were a couple of minor subdivisions that were approved by the county, connected to city water, and our city water customers paying double rates was around the city limits. And then I believe it was the Sid's Mill property on Reese Wilson and South Point Road, they wanted to do more than eight lots, so they had to be annexed into the city. So if you go down South Point Road and take a left on Reese Wilson, you see there's row houses, there was South Point, those are all in the city limits, surrounded by the county. So that's, that's how all this sort of evolved. So since then, in the last several months, we've had two specific requests for properties outside the HB six thirty boundary, or just the HB six thirty boundary just barely touches the rear of the property. So is it really in it, is it not in it, don't know. Because HB six thirty boundary is a half mile from the coal ash basin, is not parcel, so it doesn't follow parcel law, it just follows sort of half mile block from the coal ash. So established that, staff said, these two requests do not comply with the policy because they're either wanting to build a major subdivision or because they're outside of the HB six thirty boundary. So we can't, we can't approve what you're wanting to do. Your only venue is to go to the water sewer committee, I think, with cases. So we're trying to get that done this spring, in COVID, and we, you know, and everything changed, so we said, hold on, we'll, we'll, council will be with you. So that's where we are tonight. So you've got two specific requests. One at, uh, one just west of Misty Waters, where the boundaries, the HB six thirty boundary kind of flips the rear of the yard, the property owner would like to develop, to subdivide that property into multiple houses. I don't think it would be more than, than eight, but the property owner here can answer those specific questions if you have them. But, so that's one issue. The other issue is you've got a property owner farther down Lower Armstrong Road, it's clearly outside the HB six thirty boundary, it's a building a house in the light of city water, and there may have been some, it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion as to whether or not the city staff in error told the property owner or the builder, we can serve with city water, but looking at policy change. So that's another issue. So instead, so what I would like for the council to consider, instead of looking at these sort of one-off questions, is think of a bigger picture issue of, do we want to be a regional water provider for people primarily on the peninsula, that's where we have water lines and water infrastructure outside of the city limits? We don't really have that in Northern Belmont or in other parts of, just outside the city limits, primarily on the peninsula, because Duke Energy put in those lines, it's not like the city taxpayers put in those lines, or other developers put in those lines from the plant or point, reflection point. So if the, if the infrastructure is already in place, do we want to allow people outside the city limits to connect to water without having to be annexed? And what, and they would be charged double rates, like, per our policy? I talked to our utilities department, we have the capacity to serve residents outside the city limits in that area, it's a different infrastructure need to do that, connect with existing infrastructure. One of our major capital projects in the water sewer fund is that South Belmont Elevated Water Tank, which, when that's installed, when that's built, then that will, that will solve the water pressure and concern with water availability issue down there. So we do have the infrastructure in place that we can be essentially a regional water provider for people outside the city limits on the southern end of town, if council wants to, that would just be a sort of taming that policy. Now, one of the reasons council was a little bit hesitant to allow for connections outside the city limits without annexation was a little advantage, for probably what you said in a previous discussion. And so if somebody's going to develop property, we wanted them to develop in Bel, even the same location, outside the city, but we wanted them to develop under Belmont laws, not county laws. So as we found out through the annexation laws, neighborhoods have to have a hundred percent participation in order to be annexed. You get one hole out, neighborhood can be annexed. So really denying water service as the growth management tool is not, is not going to happen as we talked about several years ago. So folks can develop in the county, they can have shared, they can get a community well, they can have individual subdivision, and they can build just as dens, if not more than actually than, than Howard Wolves in particular cases based on the county zone. So the county zoning and city zoning are really comparable down in that area, plus the San Antonio way, particularly if they use a community well instead of individual ones. So really, the growth management aspect of it, to me, has been sort of negated. The question really is, do we want to sell water for folks outside the city limits down here at double rates? Or we just want to say, no, we don't want to do it? Those, to me, those are the two choices that I recommend if we, that we become a regional water provider down there. It's just going to, the, the cost of those maintenance that is paid by Duke Energy, we now own them, we have the maintenance costs, and again, you're getting more people on the same amount of line, so it's more revenue, more people helping to pay for the long-term maintenance. And it's double rate, so it does help our, it's not going to be a lot, but it will help the revenue in that system. So, so my recommendation, in talking with others, that we, we, we do have the capacity to be a regional water provider down there. We would need to, if council mentioned, we would revise our policy and bring it back to you. If you don't want to do that, just want, we don't have to. But what I would like to do is sort of get out of the ones and twos and individual requests and have an overarching policy. So that way you streamline the whole process and you're not, you know, we don't have to bring this to you every time, we have clear direction to planning staff, utilities staff on that, where we have existing lines on. I would not want the city to have to go in and install water lines for this cause to connect people outside the city. So if, if Duke Energy has already put those lines in, if private developers have already put those lines in, they're already underground, we can connect to them, we're confident that it's not going to adversely impact any existing water customer, I would suggest that we do that. Or if somebody outside the city wants to extend those water lines, they would do the bigger calls on it, not a rate related calls. So that's kind of good picture questions, the applicants or the entrance departments are here, they complete their individual cases if you want, if you want to hear them on that. But I, I wanted to kind of pose it as a bigger, more philosophical question first and see, see what you think on that, and then if you want to hear from the property in the area you manage.
Yeah, they would have to pay for the hookup, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, and legal ramifications, there wouldn't be any legal ramifications on this?
I, I don't see so. There are a lot of towns that have water utilities and are recent water providers, Gastonians are, Gastonians serve multiple.
So we would benefit then by the water usage?
Yes. And now sewer is a separate issue. We have a sewer capacity issue, sewer is very expensive, sewer is very difficult. The peninsula, you know, rising from the water, it's a lot of total challenges with that. Sewer subdivision, this is not about sewer. I still suggest that if somebody wants to stay on our sewer system, they have to be annexed. This is just for water.
Now, even, but even more would still not be affected by this, right? Even more.
Right.
These are probably small.
So, yeah, well, no, I would, I would suggest that we sort of just, we kind of clean up all the changes to the policy of the last couple of years now that we're in this position, and just say that the city's not going to extend its water system for properties outside the city limits, but if, if there's an existing water line in front of a property outside the city limits, and the, the utility staff is comfortable that it's not going to harm the system or any customers, then we would allow for the property owner to access our system.
Okay. I'm still concerned, are we, if I was going to develop, if we might, I could still do that thing?
Yeah. Unless, unless you want to not let that happen.
Okay, so that confirms, because that seems we're trying to pay some, a bigger incentive than what I, I would have thought.
That's totally up to the council.
Well, with that scenario, are you any concerned that we can't take questions overall?
Deferred, yeah.
Not this guy, not, not only, not only, not only down to the road portion of South Point Road, that's very, that's one of those, we're seeing, it's a great, you know, pressure on Armstrong Road, right, and it, with, and by eight weeks, we're probably going to see that tower goes up. And once that tower goes up, and once, we, we, it gets certified to the state, we call it, that's probably, uh, losing pressure in that area greatly because where it's set and how, what, what it's, what it's, down there. So you won't see in the next, in the next twenty, twenty to twenty-four months, you're not going to, you're not going to have any pressure problem down there. And I agree with Adrian, as long as we're not, as long as, if you're not paying, unless you want, unless council would like to do that, then that would be something that would settle. I would see an issue with, I would see a pressure down there right now, and I think it's cleaning it up and just, certainly everybody loves that. We went through a very short period, about four years, we had, I think our policy, that each policy changed at least six times, it's not, it's not more. And I think that's where, like, folks were looking at it every day, they, they may have remembered the three, they may have remembered the three destructions, I think that's where some of the minutes came with one of these.
You think it's a good idea, Chuck?
I would say that, I would say that any time, any time that we can get increased revenue for cities on any new way, shape, form, I'm for it. As long as it doesn't adversely impact anything that we currently serve, not all the way through.
I, I didn't hear Mark's question about like a ten to fifteen, I don't know, we hear all that stuff.
Yeah, I could say, does this affect the people, say if you wanted to attend fifteen house, some people and agents, if they were being included, would they?
Oh, would they? So, yeah, so if you want to set a cap, that we would allow up to X number of units to be, allow to connect without annexation, but if it's above that, yeah, so that's about...
What did we say, a major subdivision is more than eight?
More than eight.
Well, whatever you want to do, we can set a cap at that point. But then, not both of us, because as you said, the benchmark for annexation is too high. We're not going to get on that issue anyway, it's going to be all, all of that. You can see this as a business opportunity, that's another way to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so, some of those, that we come up with water, are going to have to extend something anyway, so it's going to, they're going to have to do annex to do all that, right?
If they have to extend a water main down into their property, then they need to be annexed.
Okay, so that's a good problem, I think.
So, so probably a cleaner way would be consistent with what the council's done for the last, say, five years, is really expand the, the major minor subdivision rule, which is now only in the, that HB six thirty half mile boundary from the coal ash, extend it to that entire area where we do have a water main. So extend it all the way down, uh, Lower Armstrong Road, send it all the way down South Point Road. If, if we have the water infrastructure in place and you're doing fewer than eight lots, so it's a minor subdivision, no extension of street, then you can get water, whether if you're inside or outside that HB six thirty boundary. But if you want to do a major subdivision, which is more than eight lots, or an extension of new roads, whatever, new infrastructure, so that you're following the definition of major subdivision, then you have to be annexed if you want our water.
I think that's something they need from the district standpoint, what we talked about, but that's where you...
And you're talking just how to, from...
Anywhere there's an, there's an existing water main, so Duke provided, well, we have water, force mains on South Point, Lower, but there's some that went into some of these other neighborhoods that may have, or the parcels have passed through them.
Were your force mains in there down in the mine? Trying to work that possibility where you have someone in like a advantage list, you said, you've got X amount of acres. I say, well, I'm going to do a large subdivision, I'm going to do a case, two years later, I'm going to be late, I'm going to be late, I'm going to be late. See what I'm saying? Kind of not get annexed in? Is that a possibility? And if it is, can we put language in there to say we can't?
But I think it's going to be limited by roof funds. Because, because, is, uh, my thing, and they, they should, I don't know, that, that, that minor subdivision has to be eight or, can be in a pension or many things, because...
Seven.
That, that, no one's that, no one's that, seven or fewer and the location of infrastructure, that group runs anymore. Correct? So it's going to be limited on here, it's going to be limited by the amount of roof funds. I can have a hundred acres, but my roof fund isn't going to let me do, but ten that I'm going to combine with, and I need to make my lots, lots, my front lots long enough of, of, why not two, I'll, I'll sell, I mean, I can keep one of them, but, you know, it's going to limit, like, it will be limited by what roof fund I can have.
And that, that will take care of most of us. We can't write a rule that is going to be airtight and nobody's going to get around.
Right.
We, we've already found some clever, clever solutions gotten around this rule. So I don't know if that addresses a specific request from the two gentlemen that are here tonight, but that's, that would, that would be my recommendation, is that we just basically take the revision from, uh, twenty eighteen, and just expand it to the entire area that serves our water, not just the, the HB six thirty boundary. And that's the one that differentiates between the minor subdivision and the major subdivision.
Right. Well, that would be the petition again?
So I'd ask, would that satisfy?
Sure, that would certainly work for us.
So you've, you've got the one house, right? Just one house?
Mine is, sometimes it's four thousand, only four acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, so are you extending infrastructure or are you building a road to them?
No, that's the reason it's only four houses, it's, it's, as Chuck said, you, when you go outside the city limits, you've got to ask the cabinet to deal with it. And they're going to come in with air requirements on the road funding, and then it could be all certain amount of houses. Now, literally, you've got to put in a road and curbing and everything else. So that's why the development I'm, I'm selling to has, that I just want to put four houses in, and you had a lot of price on it, but it came out better for others.
Because once you put in that infrastructure and road, your costs escalate tremendously, so then you've got to get a certain number of units to match your costs.
And then they have to be annexed, yeah?
And then they have to be annexed.
But they subsidize there's an existing water line, and they're not doing anything other than build a house.
And just make the, make the one, yeah, just subdivide it into no more than, than more than that.
Okay, seven or less.
Yes.
I need to ask something to tell you, but, this is our general policy, notwithstanding whenever we decide to make the policy going forward, and whether such policies would encompass the fact that you want to make, that you should address them individually, or it would change the policy to that, that amount.
I'm watching both change policy at a upcoming meeting, and they can come in under the new policy. If you want to, have they, have they submitted a formal request?
They, they just, they contacted us in writing, said they wanted, wanted to come forward to the water sewer committee, which is now the council.
So they, they just have a request at a meeting with the, with the committee. So you, you anticipate coming up with some, a new policy amendment?
Yes.
As we left the meeting room?
So, so I would like to get direction from the council, and then we can just revise the policy again and put it on your October fifth agenda for action.
I think it's fine with me, as long as it's, it's the seven, the hundred part.
And just make it clear from the summary, I just want, that it's existing lines, you know, whether it's from the coal ash, whether it's from something else, but it's, you know, basically that they can hook up to an existing line.
So I wanted to try to summarize this, so I'll make sure that I've got it correct, and Chuck can help me when we're wrapped in the policy revision. So we'll amend the twenty eighteen policy to say that if properties outside of the city limits want to connect to city water to an existing city water line, Chuck can help with the right part of it on that.
You need to attorney help it too.
Yes.
Fortunately, we have.
We've got a couple of them.
Yeah, a couple of them.
One that costs a lot more than the other.
Yeah, this one's cheap. Because I know what you get paid.
So you get what you pay for, right part. So if you have an existing water line...
I don't know, I don't think that's a good thing to say.
So, so if you're outside the city limits, but your property has an existing city water line, has access to it, you could connect to that water line if you are either an individual property, individual lot, or you're wanting to subdivide property as a minor subdivision, which by definition is seven.
Maybe if we want to, if we want to get that drive and, 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 provision in that five inch relation or any of those.
Would, would that be sufficient to serve seven or fewer houses?
Yeah, well, we, we do a one each step, and you, you go up a one each step, you're taking into eleven more.
Okay. I don't know the reason to regulate that, I, I think, I mean, that's going to be case by case, but it sounds like what we have is going to be...
Why do we have that on vision there? I'm not saying that it was, you do fast, so we have vision in there, we have, we have one each step.
And Adrian, I don't know, but we should add a larger cap on fees, but I don't know that y'all need to talk about that part. Somebody...
Connect fee, tax fee. So we, the, the, we're talking double tax fees throughout the... Which is the right, which is our policy.
Okay, so I don't know, y'all, y'all need to talk about that.
And I don't know if we can talk... And I don't know that we can charge double, I think if we charge for service, it has to be based on cost of, of, but we do charge the double rate rate.
Adrian, when you say as long as they have access to the water line, and I don't have a policy, we didn't want, comment on this, I mean, I think about wanting to reasonable access, and remember council approved tying in, which names, or remember?
Oh, the Rubbles.
Rubbles, and they went all over the place.
So we, I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't want to make it complicated, we can just say if there's a water line in your property.
We'll try and track the language that was used in the existing policy and adapt it.
Yeah, because I want somebody to tell me, all right, and reasonable access to this, but that's, and, and this one went all over the place, and you have to, I mean.
I think it's just, Adrian's just trying to get out sentence, and then the words smits.
I'll let Jim pick it up.
It's not going to be a disaster.
Okay, so, so we're a bit of an individual lot or minor subdivision, kind of being annexed.
Doesn't matter whether you're out in Front Armstrong or South Point, doesn't matter whether it's existing or planned at this point.
It's just, as long as there's an existing water line running the property.
Yeah.
Then, so that, so I'll have that ready for you to consider, and since we've had this discussion, do you mind if I, if I don't, if I don't, if I cover it?
Okay.
Then we have a separate and unrelated water and sewer issue, and Troy, do you want to do your presentation on stuff that?
Adrian, can I ask a quick question before?
Yes.
So timeframe wise, and then I'll be able to leave this meeting, but timeframe wise, what can we expect?
So this will go to the city council for approval at their October the fifth business meeting.
Right.
It'll be put on the consent agenda, so it'll be hopefully approved upfront on the beginning of that meeting.
Okay.
And then the next day, you come in and offer the shelling.
So October, and that's October the?
October the fifth.
Thank you.
So if it's approved, October sixth will be in effect.
So they need to be some light, based on this discussion and everything, what's left to come around. Thank you all very much.
Unless Jim, unless Jim doesn't get the word in. And thank you for your patience these last few months as we try to figure out how to meet and.
You know, I should go out. After your patients.
So the next item for water and sewer consideration is a request from the property under 803 Walnut Avenue to either reduce or abandon the city's utility easement on that property. And I'll, I'll get to ask Troy Knight to come and present the background of this case and then give you a question on that. So turn over to Troy Knight.
Good evening, Troy Knight, I'm a general contractor and realtor, I'm here representing plus from my temper code, and Todd Goode, building a new home on 803 Walnut Avenue. Some years back, there was a road, Davis Avenue, that was abandoned, and under that abandonment recording, it says the city maintained a thirty-six foot, basically in the old right of way, maintain that as a permanent easement. State of North Carolina says to you, you either way, you can either maintain that as an easement or you can give it up completely. And we are requesting that the city either give up that easement completely or reduce it to a half of that, which thirty-six foot for a potential easement down the road that we don't see, you know, need huge use of, personal from a development standpoint. I would feel thirty-six foot is a little bit of overkill, eighteen foot would suffice for anything that would go in there, in my opinion, but, you know, if you look at your map there, you can see that Walnut Avenue connects directly to Julia, so any utility that needs to be installed in the future could just run down Walnut Avenue, and the only thing I can think of would be a storm system, which most likely would never be installed on some of these side roads like that. You know, run down Walnut, that all the houses, instead of running through an old easement. And so the map I gave shows the parcel highlighted, and I use your reference on where it is, it's just on Julia Avenue. And the lot is regular shaped, and with our setbacks, say, we had a long discussion early on setbacks, but that was a lot to deal with new construction, on existing infill, it's a little bit different rule, and it's based on the size of the lot. And so based on this side of the lot, we've got a twelve foot side setback on either side, or you can use the average setback of the home along that block, but it comes down to whichever is more restricted. So we're using the twelve foot side setback, and we want to make sure the HVAC equivalent is not sitting inside that setback. And so you can see, well, here's the house that we planned to build, modest, twenty hundred square foot house, but the width is sixty-eight feet wide with a side loaded garage. And on this slide here, it shows that that footprint encroaches into the first half of that current easement. So with the regular shaped lot and the twelve foot side setback, pushes this house over to, you know, into that easement, whereas if we had, you know, five foot setback, we'd be okay. So the homeowner though is requesting that the city consider abandoning the use of this easement, so that it will tolerate the standard house.
What's the easement deal?
The easement currently has nothing in it, it's just there just in case.
So it's, it's an old easement that does not have any lines, and most of our utilities, we call them a water line or sewer line, or a storm, or a, or a line, this one doesn't have nothing in there. I talked to Chuck about this, and we don't have any plans for utility extensions in that area. It's, it's not needed for access or maintenance, there's nothing there. Our, our minimum width for a utility is twenty feet. So if you want to entertain reducing the width of this utility from hyper regimen to go down from thirty-six feet to twenty feet, that way we still have it if we ever need it for some reason. Once we give it up, it's going to be really difficult to get back. So if we were to, it looks like if we were to reduce it to twenty feet, that's still allowing to build.
That's true, yes.
That sounds good.
And how many, how many bedrooms are in the proposed house?
It has three bedrooms and a middle office, maybe four bedrooms.
Do you know how many bedrooms are in the proposed house?
I think it's thirty-three, I think.
So there's no net new utility also, but this would be presumably a more expensive house than what's there now.
Yeah, so there are more expensive houses for a couple, we plan to be there for a very long time.
So by giving up sixty feet of utility, even if we're not using, and you don't have any plans to get an increase in that, also currently we have a house that runs a well, not paying, so it's, so it will be paying for water tanks. That would be against this development, yes. I'm not going to say that at all, I will say that by, by doing this, then, then, there's an impossibility. So Chuck, again, from your operations, if we reduce this easement from thirty-six feet to twenty feet, that, that still allows some unknown future use for that easement, but allows, that's enough width, you can get.
I suppose, yeah. I, Adrian, we're not, we're not leaving this, uh, here. With the discussion we had prior to this, and the discussion we have all time, there's some that will pop in behind, but you can, you can add and you can, you may or may not need that, access it for a utility, an utility from an empty scene, like, especially for sewer, for fall, uh, that is, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily need, uh, a, 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 and that area for, uh, even, you guys, so, sewer or water.
Thank you. So are there any questions for the applicant, the owner, or Chuck?
And that would be, I think, my last, that's, since your purpose is the twenty, if we reduce it to twenty, I'm sorry, you'll still be able to do what you need to do if we reduce it to twenty?
Yes. That we reduce that easement to twenty feet.
I'll second.
A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye. All right, vote for Cameron.
So can I ask that, to, to do this, we need it, either platter or some kind of document that gets reported at the county.
We'll repla, uh, yes, and I would suggest that the applicant pay all those costs.
Okay.
Good, so. Thank you. So I would like to summarize our two and a half hour discussion, and then we've got to put a close session into this. So as far as the setback discussion, we're going to try to schedule a, we are going to schedule a field trip around town, or late October when we have our new boss, and then we'll look at.
Walk.
We will, we will, we will travel the neighborhoods, and disembark and walk to the neighborhoods, just to see the different housing choices, the different, we have, and that, and then the planning board will form a setback committee, they'll leave this, and report back to the planning board, and I'll share it in the fourth meeting, with the goal in mind that we have the text memo ready for delivery from the planning board and the council. And text memo probably will look at treating housing types in different parts of town differently, and all the things we talked about in that. And then I will work on the, an amendment to our 2018 water and sewer extension policy to reflect, basically to just take out that HB 630 boundary, for the individual property owner, or if you want a minor subdivision, you'd be allowed to get water as long as it's available, without being annexed, but if you are a major, want to do a major subdivision, you have to be annexed. And then you took action on this request. Is that sound, right? Thank you. Then we need to go into a close session.
To discuss personnel, and that will.
And include the, the HR director.
HR.
Is that your motion, Mark? Okay, I second.